Next to the last meeting of the year in 2014. It's amazing how fast the year went by. And so with that, I will call this meeting to order and stand with me for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi, councillor. Welcome. Next up is roll call. So, let's see, we have... Start voting, please. Kristi?
We have a quorum with seven councillors present.
Thank you very much, Kristi. Next up, we have agenda approval. Are there any changes, additions, or deletions to the agenda? None?
If not, Mayor, I will make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any comments or discussion on the agendas presented? If not, start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Next up, we have citizen comment. Alamosa City Council welcomes your comments. Citizens wishing to speak up to three minutes may obtain and complete a card through the city clerk at the start of the meeting. I believe we have two cards tonight. One is Mr. Ron Brink. Thank you for being here, Ron. State your name and your address for us, please.
Ron Brink's my name, and my address is rural Colorado. I live in Alamosa County. I'm not a citizen of the town, but very interested in what goes on here, and thank you, Mayor, for my... and councilman. But I've got a couple of little things I want to visit about. One is, did a nice job on Clark Street for two blocks. Then it looks like you went to another... They go to another town out somewhere. So if you don't know what I'm talking about, drive up Clark Street, and I think you'll see. When you have a paving company move in and do two blocks, and then sometime later you're going to want two more blocks done, they're going to charge you a lot to come back and finish that up, I think. And I just thought that was an oversight. Should have done the whole thing. It'd look better. Now for the good part. My wife and I eat out quite often. We go to the golf course, and for quite a while it was okay. Then it went bad, but we've been there in the last month, I think, three times, twice for lunch, and once on a Sunday, and I was pleasantly surprised. We were delighted on what had the changes been, and I just think it's great. And Sunday was... Councilman, you were there that day? I thought it was super. It was very good. Very good. And Heather informed me not to take more than two and a half minutes, so I thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ron. We appreciate those comments. Council, do you have any comments on Mr. Brink? If not, we will move on to Stefane Atencio. Thank you for being here, Mr. Atencio.
Thank you.
You state your name and your address for the record, please.
Stefano Atencio, 908 Cottonwood Drive, Alamosa. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. And secondly, we want to thank you, Lisa and I, for the work that you have done in response to our request, putting a sign that said the road is closed, and grappling a little turnaround there. What I'm talking about is, what we're asking for is that you close a portion of Cottonwood Drive to vehicular traffic. Cottonwood Drive runs along just past the clubhouse. If you continue going along that path, right where the pavement ends, that's our house, where the last house in the development. There is no development beyond that point. It's platted, and it's obviously platted as a road, but there is no development. That road continues. It's basically a dirt path, very rutted dirt path, that ends at the northern boundary of the golf course and intersects the road that leads from the North River Road to the Frisbee Park and the city property out in that direction. And that's what we're talking about, is asking to close that to vehicular traffic only. Not close it to the public or anything like that, but just to prevent vehicles from going there. While we appreciate the road closure sign, apparently many drivers can't read. There's an awful lot of traffic that goes through there, still does, and so it's a good first step, but I think in order to solve some of the problems, it requires closure of that road. The problems that we're concerned about may seem minor, you know, just litter vandalism, partying out there, and things like that. I don't know if you've seen the north end of that road where it intersects, but it's just... It's filthy. It's trashy. People go out there to park, and I know of several people, golfers and such, that have been subject to behaviors that are not appropriate in public occurring in that area in the vehicles that are parked over there. So, you know, some of it may seem rather minor, but again, it's a problem. It is private property, and no one's out there to clean it up. The city's not doing anything to maintain it or keep it clean. The owner has informed one of the golf board members. He has absolutely no objection to closing that road to vehicular traffic. He's, you know, if and when it's developed, you know, then that'd be the time to get that thing paved. But it's also... It can be more serious than that. There's been some vandalism out there. We've been the victim of vandalism. I think there's been some crime out there. We know the police have been out there several times. And we've... We had an incident recently where, you know, someone goes past the closed road sign, gets beyond where you can see him, and they park their vehicle, and then they come back to our house to see if anybody's home. We're the last ones out there. There's a light in the vacant lot between our house and the next house, but that's it. There's no light out there anymore, and it's dark, and it provides opportunities that I think if you don't allow vehicles back there, that could be prevented. The other thing is, in the... There's really no need for vehicular traffic. Basically, it's all private property except for a public road, okay? You go from one point to the next road, which can be accessed by going outside of the golf course to that same point. The owner doesn't mind closing it. There's really no need. If you just close it to vehicular traffic, then pedestrians can still use the public road and walk around as they will. The owner hasn't said anything about the trespass, but, you know, maybe the people that want to walk their dogs and, you know, check out the flora and fauna, that's still something that can occur. The other thing that closing the road will help is, you're probably aware, we've had two major incidents of people getting out there in vehicles and then just tearing up the golf course, driving out onto the golf course and just tearing it up out there. So we're always on alert for anybody out there. We keep an eye. Let's don't destroy the golf course, but that would also be something. And I know I'm probably running out of time, but the golf board has not taken an official position on this. Many members have expressed the desire to have it closed, but there's no official position they... One way or the other, but they will vote on it next month and let you know what their position is. And from my understanding, I won't speak for the whole board, they're not concerned about it being closed. So we would urge you to consider that, closure to vehicular traffic at the north end, you know, you can do a little turnaround there with another sign. There's the city property where people can park if they want to go walk. I just don't think there's a real need for vehicular traffic through there, and it can really help avoid a lot of harms.
Thank you, Mr. Atencio. Appreciate your observations in that area. We will be discussing this later this evening. Thank you very much for that. So that will have a follow-up, or does staff have a follow-up? Heather?
Not at this point. When you reach the agenda, I can give a brief overview.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Mayor, can I make a comment on one of Ron's questions on Clark? The reason that street was... Only went as far as it did, Ron, was because we did SID out there, so the people that participated in that SID, that's where it ended. And so the next phase, if those people really... If they want to participate, they can participate on that SID. And you're right, it doesn't look right. Hopefully, we can get those people to participate, so that'll carry on all the way straight through to towards Walmart and stuff. So it wasn't SID that the people paid for that themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Gregel. Anyone else have a comment? All right. Thank you. Next up, we'll move on to Consent Calendar A. The Consent Calendar allows multiple actions with one motion. Consent Calendar A contains routine items which have been recommended for action by staff or advisory boards. Council may remove a consent calendar item for separate consideration. Tonight, we have one item on Consent Calendar A, and that's approved minutes of regular meeting, November 19, 2014.
I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I have a motion and a second. Start voting, please. Kristi?
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, council. Next, we'll move on to regular business, presentations from outside agencies. And tonight, we have the Great Sand Dunes National Park and Preserve, Superintendent Lisa Carrico, and her topic is proposal to change entrance fees at the Great Sand Dunes. Also, we have Catherine Foz and Tom Moran. Thank you for being here.
Mayor Lucero, councilman, thank you for your time on the agenda tonight. Before we talk about our proposed fee change, it's our pleasure and honor to make a presentation to the city of Alamosa in appreciation for your partnership and support, particularly related to the recent Sand Dunes Quarter Event.
On September 4, 2014, Great Sand Dunes welcomed over 2,600 visitors to Great Sand Dunes. It was the biggest event that we've ever hosted and that we've ever planned. We can't take all the credit, but we can say thank you to individuals such as yourself, as well as individuals such as Andy Rice and Hines from the Alamosa Recreation Center for allowing us to use supplies, and of course, the community who was coming out and was gracious enough to support us and continue to encourage us to be their national park. Thank you so much. We want to honor you with this nice presentation of the quarter. If Hines wants to walk up as well to take a photo. The frame depicts both the design and then the quarters from the Denver Mint and the Philadelphia Mint.
Thank you, sir. Thank you so much.
And then here's this.
My name is Lisa Carrico. I'm the superintendent at Great Sand Dunes. With me tonight, I'm very fortunate to have Kathy Foz, our chief of interpretation and visitor services, and the public information officer for the park, and Tom Moran, who is... Likes to work behind the scenes. He runs our entrance fee operation and our campground reservation system. We're here tonight to give a five-minute presentation about the proposed fee increases for the park, and then to answer any questions that you all might have, or to attempt to answer them. The National Park Service has updated current fee schedules for parks nationwide, which has not changed since 2008. Great Sand Dunes is proposing an increase in its current entrance fees to align with the new National Park rate schedule. The current entrance fees for Great Sand Dunes have been in effect for 17 years, since 1997. We have provided each of you with a copy of a recent press release that appeared in the Valley Courier. In addition to that, we've provided you with some frequently asked questions and our responses to that. Both those documents are available on the park's website as well. The address for the park website is on the bottom of the frequently asked questions. So I want to talk to you a little bit about what our rates are now, what would change under this proposal, what would stay the same, and give you some more information so that you have a good understanding of what we're looking at. Our rates now, an annual pass to Great Sand Dunes is $15, and that allows passage for that $15 for an entire year. We also charge a per-person rate of $3. That per-person rate is charged for people coming in vehicles, in buses, on foot, motorcycles, all those things. What will change under this proposal will be a fee increase phased in over two years. We are proposing in 2015, at the earliest, Phase 1 of our increase, the annual pass would increase from $15 to $30. The per-person rate would increase from $3 to $7, and that would be for people on foot or on bicycle. We would have a new rate for private, non-commercial vehicles, and that would be $15 regardless of the number of people in the vehicle. And there would also be a new motorcycle rate of $10 regardless of the number of people, whether it's one or two people on that motorcycle. The second phase of the increase would occur in 2016, and the rates would increase for the final time. The annual pass would go from $30 to $40. The private, non-commercial vehicle rate would go from 15 to 20. Motorcycle rate would increase from 10 to 15, and the per-person rate would increase from 7 to 10. There's a table in the press release before you that shows this as well. So those are the things that would change under this proposal. What would not change under this proposal? Sand Dunes... The Great Sand Dunes would not increase its camping fees. Those fees are currently $20 per night per site. The inter-agency, America the Beautiful Pass, and that's the pass that can be purchased, which is good for all national park, national forest, and BLM areas, would stay the same rate. That rate is set under different legislation. The senior pass, which is available to anyone 62 years of age or over, would stay the same, as would the access pass, which is available to anyone who is permanently disabled. The rates for those would stay the same. Educational fee waivers would not be impacted by this proposed fee increase. Great Sand Dunes would continue to grant fee waivers to educational institutions that bring students to the park for field trips or other activities with an educational component. Regardless of our fee structure, passes are good for seven days, so visitors who want to exit and re-enter the park during that seven-day period would only be charged the first time. That's how it is now. That's how it would be under this new proposed structure. Under any scenario, we believe the annual park pass is the best deal for people who anticipate visiting Great Sand Dunes multiple times in any year. We tell folks from our local communities who come out on a regular basis, if you buy the annual pass and come more than a couple of times, you will realize a cost benefit. One of the questions we've gotten several times is how much we collect in a year, and we collect approximately $600,000 every year in entrance and campground fees. At this time, we can only speculate that if this fee proposed... This proposed increase goes into effect, our revenues would increase. If the new rate schedule is implemented, if the final decision is to go ahead with the fee increase, we will track and be transparent and provide accurate figures about the changes, the increase in our revenue. We are authorized by federal law to keep 80% of what we collect to be used here at Great Sand Dunes. The other 20% is distributed through National Park System to parks throughout the system. That's part of the fee legislation. So you may be wondering what we spend fee dollars for. We spend fee monies on activities, facilities, and services that directly serve our visitors. There's very clear guidance about what fee money can be spent on. Since the beginning of the fee program in the '90s, Great Sand Dunes has spent over $7 million on a variety of projects, including construction and maintenance of hiking trails, updating the campground, picnic area, and amphitheater, providing bear-proof trash and recycling containers, publishing on an annual basis a park newspaper, and brochures and site bulletins that are distributed not only in the park, but are also available at local area visitor information centers. Those are some of the key things that are funded by fee dollars. We're really excited about an upcoming project that we are planning that will be funded with fee dollars, and that will be the design, construction, and installation of all new exhibits in the park's visitor center. I want to close by telling all of you that we recognize the role and responsibilities we have here in the valley. We are a tourism destination, and we are a family tradition for many valley residents. Over 240,000 people visit Great Sand Dunes each year. A study conducted for 2012 shows that visitors contributed $14 million to the local economy and supported 183 jobs related to tourism. Many of our visitors are valley residents whose families have been coming to the Sand Dunes for generations, and we want that to continue. The decisions we make at Great Sand Dunes impact our communities on a variety of levels, not only in terms of resource conservation and stewardship, but also in economic terms. We want to continue to manage Great Sand Dunes, to protect resources, and to serve our visitors, and to serve our local communities. We are in a civic engagement period now. We are sharing information as widely as possible, and we are seeking feedback on this proposal to increase our entrance fees. No decisions have been made. Our final decision will be made based on the feedback we receive, so it is absolutely critical that we hear from communities in the San Luis Valley. To comment, there are several ways. They're outlined in the press release and in the FAQs that I gave you. They're available on our website, and we're going to various organizations and groups and giving this same dog and pony show. By email, in writing, mailed to me at the Sand Dunes, or in person. We have visitor comment cards at our visitor center. We are open seven days a week, 9:00 to 4:30, except Christmas Day and New Year's Day. Comments must be received by January 2, and it's really, really important that we hear from folks, so that the decision we make about this is one that will be effective and of benefit to not only our visitors, but to our local communities. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Council, do you have any questions? Councillor Coleman?
I have a few comments and maybe some questions at the end, but I know that this issue has come up, and it's very important to a lot of constituents that we have here in the San Luis Valley. So today, I took the liberty of calling several of those constituents to get their feedback on this issue. I'm for the government trying to find creative ways to pay for itself. However, I believe that we have to find some common ground to make this... These rate increases beneficial to all. When I talked to some of the local community, it was a makeup of some of the wealthy people in the community, some of the middle-class people in the community, as well as some of the poor people in our community. And many, and many of them understand that there may be a need for a fee increase. However, your current proposed increases could cause trouble for many people financially and not allow many people to have access to the Great Sand Dunes. Here's what concerns me. It appears that you might be pricing out the access of our public lands, which are already being partially funded by federal dollars that many of these people are paying. Here are a few comments that I received from some of the constituency. If there is a rate increase, I'm afraid that the Great Sand Dunes could possibly be a place to where local people won't be able to afford. Another comment came in, says doubling the fee seems a little extreme at first blush, but as a park visitor who is thrilled to have green space protected, I'm okay with the increase. Another one said, we have to find common ground to make this beneficial to all, to help us keep our parks open. So they gave me some constructive feedback, and what they're proposing is that if there is an increase, maybe for the local residents with ID, maybe the fee increase could be gradually raised to maybe $5 per person instead of the proposed $7. Another thing that they propose is maybe with your annual fee, raise it to maybe $20 for local residents, but we need some type of, I guess, rebates for the local residents by showing proof of identification. So those are a couple of comments that I have from some of the people that I talked with today. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Coleman. Councillor Diego?
I had a couple of questions. Lisa, you said the camping sites want to increase. Right now, what do those cost?
$20 a night per site.
Okay, and walk me through this, because I... So if I go and I drive up, I gotta pay an entrance fee, which is how much?
$3 per person.
Okay, so if I got 10 people, that's $30.
Yes, sir.
And then on top of that, I'm gonna pay another $20. So that's $50 just to participate. So that's $50 just to participate on that.
You're not gonna camp though?
No, no, I'm talking about the person. I'm asking this question, how much it would...
And Councilman, are any of the people in that group under 15 years of age?
No, they're all adults.
Okay, okay. Dang it. You knew what I was gonna say. Anyone 15 years of age and under is free?
Free, exactly. So it would cost $50 to participate?
Yes, to camp there for one night and to enter. If you camped multiple nights, you already paid that entrance fee for seven days. So after that, the first night would be $50, as you've said. The second night would be $20 for the camping fee only because you've already paid the entrance fee. So I think one of the things to remember is that the entrance fee, whatever it is, is good for seven days.
Okay. Another question, and Counselor Coleman kind of touched on it. Where do you get your funding to run the... Besides the $600,000 you bring in fees, what else do you get?
Right, we get, we get regular base funding through the omnibus bill that's passed by Congress every year that funds the Department of Interior. We're an agency of the Department of Interior. So the money that runs the operation of the national park, the basic things that pays our salaries, that pays our electric bill, that pays for gas and all those things, that's funded separately. The money that we get through the collection of fees goes to special projects that are not operational, those things that enhance the visitor's experience to the park.
And I guess the point I'm trying to make is, right now, the taxpayer is what's paying to operate that, right?
Yes, sir.
And this is one thing that kind of gets me, because I try to ride herd here at the city also. You know, you have a taxpayer that pays for a facility, and then you turn around and then you ask him to pay again. Now, in this case, you're asking him to pay almost triple the amount, and I don't think that's fair, you know? They're already paying for it to begin with, okay? And now, you're asking them, okay, we're gonna charge you triple the amount. We're gonna raise it one year, and then the following year, we're gonna raise it again. And I don't think that's fair. We have facilities here at the city that the taxpayers have paid for, and I know that there's costs involved, and you have to raise so much, but it's so important to keep those minimal because they're already paying for it. They're paying for those facilities. So I don't think it's fair to go to the extreme that you guys are going to. And I know you got costs, and I appreciate the information you provided us, but to go to those extremes, you know, even people that come to our community, and that might even defray some people from even coming to the Sand Dunes, because I also read on the article that, from the paper, that when you visited the county, there's areas that haven't changed their pricing in a while, and probably haven't changed their, haven't had an increase, and probably have looked at it and haven't increased their prices. So I think you need to look at those things, you know? First, who pays for it to begin with? And then how we charge them again and again, and I don't think it's fair, so...
This is a, this is a significant, this proposal represents a significant increase, definitely, from $3 to $10 is a big jump. We haven't changed our fees since 1997. There's been a moratorium at the federal level on increasing fees for national park areas since 2006, or...
2006.
Six. And so this is, I think, a dramatic, it is a dramatic increase, and one might look at it as an attempt to catch up for lost time.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Diego. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you for being here tonight and going through this with us. That's not a fun thing to do, I'm sure. Anytime you do fees, it's not fun. We're faced with that also, and I'm sure it's not you people individually that are raising the fees. But it's interesting that you're on the other side. Typically, it's us getting these fun questions about the fees being raised. It's just an interesting observation to me. I do appreciate the fact that you guys have not made the decision, that you have the, we have the ability to get on your website and make our comments, and that the decision's gonna be made at that point. And I encourage everyone to get on that website and give your concerns, and I really hope that that feedback will influence, you know, the outcome of that, and I believe it will. Looking at these fees, as someone who has spent time in national parks, these aren't outrageous fees that you're proposing in comparison to some of the other national parks, and your campground fees are basically very inexpensive in comparison. So it feels to me like you're doing a little bit of catch-up here. It would be nice if the increases were more gradual, but I do understand that, and I will get on the site and give some feedback, and I hope everyone else does, and I really do hope that that helps make, helps them with their decisions. And thanks for the information.
Thank you.
May I make a comment, please?
Sure. The important thing to say here is, in 1997, sand dunes was $3 per car. And they came out with what they call the fee demo. That changed from, how you say, the taxpayer paying for the park, and that's always been the issue. Does the taxpayer pay all the park? What about the guy in New Jersey who will never even come to Colorado? He's still paying for your park? And the federal government's come up with the theory that taxpayers are all paying for the park, that's our base fund, but people who use it should pay more. And I'm not saying, I mean, just because I'm a fee guy doesn't mean I believe in huge fees. I don't. If the government did their job right, and that's at every level, there would be no fees. Appropriation would take care of everything. But that's not the real world, though. But anyway, my point is, in 97, the government came to me, the feds, and said, "We're gonna make Sand Dunes, I mean, we're gonna change your fee," and we went from $3 per person to $3 per car. But whenever you have an individual fee, and we're the only national park in the country that's individual, they're all by car. 15 years old and younger are free. So on the average, you've got two people in a car who are paying. So our average fee right now is $6 per car. Right now, any fee amount we make, we average $1 per every person who visits the park. We're making a dollar per person. If you take all 300,000 some odd people who are coming to our park, we make about a dollar per person. That doesn't count the camping, that just counts the entrance. But in 97, we went to the $3 per car. In 2004, when, remember when we all became a national park and it was a big deal, and they came down right off the bat and said, "You've gotta change your fee to $25 per car. You're a national park now." And that's when Steve Cheney, you remember Steve Cheney was here? And Steve and I looked at him just about, "Well, there's no way on God's green earth." And so he had me draft a huge letter, and we sent it to the feds. And I said, "This is the poorest, they have some of the poorest counties in the valley here. We have lots of reasons why that shouldn't be 25." So they came back with a compromise and said 15 per car. They wanted us to do in 2004 what they want us to do now, okay? We're at the same place. But we put them off. We gave them, we took feedback, and we wrote back and said, "We can't do this. This is crazy." If you guys, I mean, I encourage even you, all you, all the officials too, to bring that feedback on, because we can't, like you say, we're sitting here taking our key from the, our bosses, the feds, but that's not written in stone in any way. It doesn't have to be 15. If they get, if we get enough feedback, and it's the right kind of feedback, that could be 10 a car, 5 a person, it could be 8 a car, 4 a person. We need the feedback. And that's why, I mean, Lisa and Kathy are doing such a great job, but last time they did anything like this, it was just Steve out there. These guys are actually just doing a dog and pony show at every city, county, and some of the state councils. We're trying to get all the local politicians and senators, their offices into this. I mean, we don't wanna sit here and make the choice. We want you guys to. So if you could put that word out, to get on that email site, don't pull any punches. Tell it like it is. Talk about, hey, man, this is crazy. It's, I mean, it's, this isn't an ultimatum right away, it may be, okay? It's your park, and you do have some power here.
Thank you, Tom. And thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I'd like to make a comment. Several of us were out at the park quarter presentation in September. What a great event. Everyone enjoyed it, a beautiful day. Couldn't be any better. The kids will remember it a long time. As for the rate increase, I think the 2015 prices are probably appropriate. When you go to 2016, they look a little steep. Is there any provision to look at this again at the end of 2015 to look at it and say, you know, maybe this is enough, or it's too high?
Same deal. We won't make any more changes without...
Okay.
Yeah, same deal.
I think that'd be great.
And let me tell you, when they were going in 2004, when they were gonna make us 15 a car, I mean, I didn't even wanna go there. I was thinking more like 10. But the cheapest national park in the country right now is us. It's at $6 average per car. And the next one is 10 per car. That's Arches, and there's a couple of 10s, but most of them are 20 to 25. Rocky's 20. And these are huge parks, where you drive for hours and stuff. And that was one of our arguments. There's four miles of roadway in the Sand Dunes, and not terribly a lot of access. I mean, if you're a senior and you're going in there, of course, you can get your senior pass, but you've gotta be pretty active adult to get out there and really see most of the park. So that's another issue. Are we worth as much as the Grand Canyon?
Yes, we're definitely worth, but should we charge that much? That's another question.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Money-wise...
I know my family visits the park probably three to four times a year, and at those prices, I think it's reasonable. Probably won't do any more than that, may cut down one visit, I don't know, but I think it's workable.
Plus, bottom line, you look at any national park in the country, and their annual pass is twice as much as their day pass, generally. Maybe two and a half times as much. Rocky is 20 for a day, 40 bucks you can get in all year. That's amazing. That's the average for all national parks. So that is one thing plus side for locals. If you're a local and you go several times a year, you're not paying. I know $30 is a lot for some people, but then again, that's what we do. We will get feedback and discuss with the people who, we want your feedback, definitely, especially city and government officials, and county officials, and state officials.
And I get up in that area about once a week with my work, and I always have to stop and look, and it's truly beautiful, so...
It is.
I mean, you look at the price you pay for that, I'm not sure you can put a price on it, so that's my closing remark. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Diego?
Oh, one more comment here, and I was trying to get on, but I guess somebody had their mics. Anyway, the $600,000 you bring in right now, is that like covering the bills and stuff that you're pretty much trying to do out there?
The $600,000 pays the salaries of the people who do the actual fee collection work, and it does things like trails maintenance. Again, that money is used for things that directly relate to visitors.
Is that amount covering it right now, the fees and all?
It has to, Councilman, because we don't plan anything that can't be funded by that. Those activities must be funded by fees, or they cut into the funding that we have for other aspects of park operations. So we make plans for facility upgrades, enhancements, special programs, based on the amount of fees we collect. If we collect more fees, if our revenue increases, then we can increase, for example, the number of programs that we provide and the number of amenities that we have to offer to visitors.
I guess the point I'm trying to make is sometimes we get caught up in using, just 'cause this place charges $100, why can't we charge $100, you know?
Right.
Or this city does this, why shouldn't we do that? If it's working right now, and if it's not broken, why try to fix it, you know? Not unless you really wanna add a lot of different other projects that's gonna, that you need twice that $600,000 to do it, you know? Because what you're charging, it'll probably double it within the year or so. So just because these other parks are charging $50, $60, it doesn't mean that we have to charge it, you know? So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Diego. Counselor Coleman?
Yeah, I would just like to add, to let our citizens know that it's very important that they do give feedback, because I'm reading from a memo here from, I believe, your director, John Jarvis, the director, and on page two of his memo, under item number four, it states, "If there is a significant public controversy, a park may choose not to implement new fees, or it may phase in new rates over three years, or delay the new rates until 2016 or 2017." So it's gonna be very important for our community here in the San Luis Valley to give that feedback and let them know how they feel about these fees.
That's correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman, and I again would like to thank you for being here. I'm a frequent visitor of the Great Sand Dunes. Anytime somebody comes to town that I know that doesn't live here, the first place we go is the Sand Dunes and hopefully the river's running. I do have some concerns about the rapid increase from the current to the 2016, which is only a couple of years away. I somewhat agree with counsel in that, or a majority of counsel, and that I think that fee could probably be more gradual as we go along and maybe over a longer period of time, which is a lot easier to absorb for the people, especially here in the southwest, because, you know, let's face it, Southern Colorado's probably one of the most economically depressed areas in the entire state. I don't know what the cross-section of visitors is that are out of the valley compared to in valley, the local folks, but local folks are very sensitive to the amenities that we have, and hitting them with a sharp increase like this is probably something that, you know, that would bother them. Anyway, one of the questions I did have is you have a $10 fee for a motorcycle, and you said generally there are two people on a motorcycle, but if you only have one person on a motorcycle, you're penalizing him, because per person, it's only $7. So that might be something you can really take a good, hard look at as well, in that if you're one person and you're on a motorcycle, you should just pay for one person instead of a person and a half. But that's an observation I have. I do, again, thank you for being here, for your presentation, and unless there are any more questions or comments, I think Counselor Stefano has a comment.
I also want to thank you for being here. Good presentation, and I agree the rates are, at increase like this, all of a sudden would put a hardship on the people here in the valley, I think. It seems like, to me, like when something becomes a national park, now all of a sudden the government thinks that we can charge more now because we are national, a national park. Brings me to a thought about Adam State College. We were at Adam State College. Now it became a university. Now we can charge more because now we're a university. So it seems like because you become an entity, all of a sudden, a bigger entity, we wanna raise the prices, and I think it should be gradual, and I think the prices are fair now, and we will put this out to the community and see what they have to say. Thank you.
The people who are mandating this increase have no idea about the San Luis Valley. They're just doing a general national park, and we, it's our job to tell them. We can't do it, because basically, we're in the nonprofit business, or we're not here to make a profit or make a killing here. We don't wanna make a lot of money. We're just keepers of what money comes in. So, yeah, again, to reiterate, these guys in Washington aren't sitting here with a hook over your head like, "We can't wait to nail you guys." We gotta tell them who the San Luis Valley is and what's going on. The way it runs in the last 10 or 15 years, our population is usually 50/50, or 50% to 43% Colorado, and a third of that is valley. And then the other 50% usually goes, the second-leading visitor's from Texas, and then the third-leading visitor, believe it or not, in this park is from a foreign country. And for instance, that's one of my arguments. I always say this at every meeting I have, I say, "Why don't we charge twice as much for people from out of country?" But come, and the... They come on the boatloads. I charge cars, and they look at me like, this is all? Like, you know, I have the annual pass? This is a fun little story. These guys want to go home and have dinner. I had a car with four or five German guys in it. This is just an example. And I was going to charge them eighty dollars for an annual, because they want the annual for all the national parks. And they ponyed up three hundred and twenty dollars. They thought it was a per-person card. I said, no, no, no. They think we're crazy. So, you know, it's all a matter of where your point of view is, where you're looking at it. We have to show, we've got that. And that's why Lisa and Kathy are doing such a big thing of this. We're going like seven or eight different places. And we've got a lot, I mean, this is the biggest effort we've made on a price increase. Of course, we haven't had one for seventeen years either, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Everyone of you guys needs to...
Yeah. Lisa, Tom, and Catherine. Thank you, thank you for being here. And, you know, we appreciate the information, but most of all, we appreciate the fact that you're getting the word out to the public and really encouraging them to make sure that they weigh in on this very important issue. And so we definitely thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, next up, we have a business brought forth by city staff. City manager slash eagle, consideration of closure of unimproved Cottonwood Drive. Heather?
This is an item that city staff's actually been working with Antencios for several years. I know it dates prior to me starting with the city, and it's something that we've been trying to, we try the signs, or we'll try kind of gravelling some areas, see if that helps. And obviously, with their presence tonight, there's still some situations that are occurring out in the area that's creating concern. From a staff perspective, this is one of those areas, or if you ask our opinion, we can give you our technical opinion in that we can put up the barriers, but we're not sure it's going to prevent all of the activity that they're concerned about. And we just wanted to be clear with that. There's not necessarily a large cost to putting up the barriers on either end, and it would certainly keep some of the vehicular traffic off. But if there's anything illegal or other items going on out there, they would still be able to access the property through other means. And so when we look at it from purely just that perspective, that's why, if you read the letter, our recommendation is that we're not sure putting the barriers is necessarily going to solve it. In regards to costs or those other items, it would be fairly minimal and not too challenging to do. And I know they've been working with their neighbors and continue to feel as if they're having some issues out there.
Thank you, Heather. Counsel, we have any... Counselor Viall?
Yes, do you have any ideas of what this barrier would look like?
Essentially, we would need to do something that would allow us to still get vehicles out there from a city perspective if we needed to. We do have some infrastructure out there, those types of things. Our vision of it would be on both sides of the road, you would have two posts and some sort of chain or something like that that would prevent it. It is fairly flat out there, though, so, you know, short of putting a fence around the entire area, I'm not sure how you can prevent some people from accessing the property through other means.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Viall. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes. First of all, I was pleased to see this item on the agenda. I've had a number of people ask me for this for the last several years. Then I was disappointed to see that the city's position was to keep it open. I'm not sure I agree with that. I was out there today, drove through the area. The first thing you see is two road-close signs. I'm not sure what the significance of road-closed actually means. Can you explain that?
As we were working with some of the behavior that was inappropriate, such as mudding or when it rains, people going out there doing donuts and those type of activities, working with police, we felt it would be easier to do citations as they're leaving or different items like that if we had those signs posted, to be able to work on that activity a little bit more.
So if there is illegal activity, you can cite them if you catch them, correct?
Sometimes it can be hard to catch them right in the middle of the act, but if they're leaving and we have suspicion and it was posted as such, it made it easier for us to do those citations.
Okay. I drove through there today, and one thing I noticed was immediately after you drive in there, there were three to four, five-gallon buckets of either paint or plaster that was just discarded along the side of the road. That's definitely a problem. The road, the ruts in the road are at least six to eight inches deep. I was in my truck, fortunately. If we get a small car out there and some mud, they will definitely be stuck if the conditions warrant that, so. And I don't know about Steve, but I wouldn't want someone knocking on my door at four in the morning saying, my car's stuck out here. Can you get me a tow truck? I share Mr. Antencios's concerns. I would like to see that area closed. There's beer cans, trash. I'm sure there's other illegal activities going on that we don't know about. And as Steve mentioned, there has been damage to the golf course in the past that has caused a big expense for the city. I think we could push up dirt dikes or cut a culvert along there that no one could pass. But I myself would like to see that road closed off. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Diego?
On this map that you have up here, I see where the, right next to Mr. Antencios's house, that's the entrance there. Where's the other entrance on the other side? I don't... Where would we put stuff on there to close what?
I believe the other entrance is right up here.
Yeah, that's where it's at.
Off North River Road.
It's about a hundred feet off the road.
Right there where your cursor is, just bring it down, just, it's left of where your cursor is, right there.
Right there.
Uh-huh. Right there. So that would send it all the way down back to Mr. Antencios's house? I don't see the road there.
So, to be clear...
It's just flat land?
This is an unimproved road that we have not improved it in regards to we don't grade it, or there's no gravel, there's nothing, there's not a use for traffic. What we would do if you wanted us to close it is we would do two posts on each end, the north and the south, with probably a chain connecting them. And the reason for that, aside from doing the burn or some item like that, is that there is times that from a city perspective, we do need to access that property. So we would want to maintain the ability to get city vehicles into there. But as far as a concern on maintaining the road, it's an unimproved, and we do not maintain the road. So we would do on the north side and the south side, two posts with a chain across.
Well, I agree with Mr. Gillespie that, you know, from looking at this map, there's no reason anybody should be out there unless us city folk trying to do something out there. But other than that, it's just an area where people just want to go back there and party and stuff. And I would hate to be living there, like you said, and at nighttime have somebody come over at your house late at night, or even when you leave. And I'd have to have a big concern with that. So I agree, I think we should close it down and leave it where we can get access, if the city needs to get access to it.
Thank you, Counselor Gregor. Counselor Johnson?
Just looking at the map, and I've been out there, it's been a while, and I've talked to Stephen about this a couple times over the last few years, and I know there's been issues. There's really no use for the road or no need. The only good feedback I got from that is there's some people that go out there and watch birds. And I think they could probably walk along the trail, but there is some bird watching going on during the day through there. So, you know, we would need to consider that. I would like to hear from the golf board a little bit on this, because I think, I would be in favor of closing it, but if we put a barrier and then they start driving around the barrier, that puts them on the green, not on the greens, but on the golf course. And then what do we do? Extend the barrier and then extend the barrier? And so I don't know. I'd like to have them talk about that and see what... Get some feedback from the golf board and see if they really believe that that's going to solve our problem. If it's illegal activity they're doing out there, going, how hard is it to drive around a barrier? And that's probably what we're going to be dealing with, is them going out on the golf grass to drive around. But I think there's some trees there, and we could probably put something between two trees that would probably work. And I get some feedback from them, and I probably should have drove out there. It's been a while since I've been out there. But that would be my concern, is if they start driving around the barrier, it may cause more damage.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Coleman?
Yes, I was out there Sunday also, just to see what type of hazard it is, because public safety is a concern. But also, I'm concerned with access for the citizens also, and I could see where you're concerned with people driving up to your home. Heather, I know you said that the cost is minimum. Can you put a dollar on what you think it might cost to close that road?
I think, you know, if we do what staff had in mind, you know, we're probably looking easily under five hundred dollars. It's something we could do with our own staff. We wouldn't have to hire someone to do, and we could get out there and do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes. It was mentioned that the golf board has not addressed this. I've spoken to several of the members, and I would say a majority of them do favor closing that road off. Steve said they're probably take this to a vote next month, and I would guess that the majority of the members will want this road closed off if it's an option. So that's not official, but from talking to many of the members, that's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Stefano?
I also agree with Steve that it should be closed off, because I've been to Steve's house once by a motorcycle, to look at a motorcycle, and on this side, there's a lot of trees. My concern is, if there's a barrier put there, there's still access on the left side between the trees if they really want to get back there. I don't see where this road goes. Does it go back further, or is it just a non-used road that continues to the back from your house towards the north?
From our house, it just, like I said, it's just, it's a dirt path. And it goes along the fairway there of eleven and twelve. And then at the end of twelve, right up there, yeah, it keeps going along there, and then it just ends at the dirt road that goes to the Frisbee Park. You see where, so that last green there, so there's that dirt road there off the pavement. So that's all, it's just from one point to the next, okay? And again, all of the property is either golf course, you know, the city golf course, you're not supposed to be out there unless you're a paying member or the public that's paid. And the rest of it is private property. So there's no reason to be out there. Unless, you know, the only, I'm sure you'll have a legal opinion, but the public road just goes from point A to point B. There's no houses, there's no structures, there's no public lands out there other than the golf course, and you're not supposed to access the golf course from there. So it's one of the proverbial roads to nowhere.
Would no trespassing signs or violators will be prosecuted or something like that?
Right now, the road closure sign, and again, thank you for the turnaround, that's helped. That has helped a lot, because it's really cut down on the traffic in our driveway. Because before that, any kind of mud, people driving, you know, cruising, they see that, they stop, they use our driveway to turn around. Now with the turnaround there, it's great. You could put another turnaround on the other side, maybe. You know, if they see the sign, they turn around. I think it helps a lot with most of the traffic. But, you know, I think there's always going to be some exception, but if you put the post and the chain and a sign that says road closed, then, you know, maybe we're not going to have the mud boggers out there. You know, maybe someone's going to go around it, but it probably helps law enforcement somewhat. If you're out there and you're in a vehicle, you know, it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a lot easier to catch them. So I think it would help tremendously. There's always going to be people that break the law, but I think it's going to help tremendously to alleviate some of these concerns and help protect the golf course as well.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. Counselor Diego?
A question maybe for Eric. As Greg says, that the golf board is going to address it and vote for it or against it. If they pass it, can they just go ahead and close it, or do they still have to come back to the city?
They have no authority at all, so it would mostly, you would be getting a sense of what their opinion and wishes are, but you are the entity with authority to deal with this.
Okay. I just, thank you.
The other item I just wanted to address, regardless if counsel decides to close the road or keep it open, this concept of people dumping stuff or littering out there, I made a note of it, and we'll go look at that and then require the property owner to clean it up. But even after it's closed, as long as people can notify the city that there is a situation, then we can work on trying to get it addressed.
That's one of the concerns I had, Heather, was the fact that some people are using this area as a dumping ground, a partying site. And I mean, you know, whoever is throwing beer bottles out there or any type of garbage, trash, they're just leaving it. And so it really falls on the city to clean it up or the private property owner. And so I don't know who owns the property. My understanding is that he has no concerns or he doesn't have a position on whether it should be closed or not. Am I right or wrong?
The information that's been shared with me is that Steve has shared. I have not had a conversation with the property owner. I don't have any reason to doubt whoever spoke with him. Obviously, if we're going to close it, we would probably contact him directly to let him know and also notify him of any littering that's occurring on his property.
Thank you. I have had several conversations with the Antencios, and their concerns, I think, are deeply rooted in the fact that, you know, it's destroying their quality of life. And I know that roadways are busy, but any type of roadways that are generally used for party atmosphere or dumping grounds or anything like that really should be addressed until that property is developed. I would probably fall in line with counsel in that maybe we could put a temporary barrier up there until the property is developed, or there's some potential for part of that property to be developed by that private owner. As long as city staff can get in and out to clean and pick up the dead trees and do whatever is needed out there by the city, I don't think it'd be detrimental to try to close it off and, on both sides, and make sure that this problem is alleviated, especially the trash part. Thank you. Counselor Diego?
I appreciate Councilman Johnson's comments on hearing back from the golf board, but after what Eric says, regardless of what they say, it's, you know, it's our position to either handle this or not. And with that, I'm going to try a motion that we go ahead and close Cottonwood Drive on both sides and only allow access for our city staff and that. So I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Counselor, just to be clear, I think the proposal is to create a physical barrier so that it's closed to motorized access except for city motorized access, but I don't believe anybody has expressed a desire to keep the, whatever, informal foot traffic.
Sure, no, 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 no. And that's what I'm leading to, exactly, whatever it takes. If it takes poles or chains or whatever it takes to alleviate the access. I'm not saying to the foot traffic for the bird watchers, I'm not saying to keep them out of there. What I'm saying is, these people that are driving back there and doing whatever they're having to do, you know, if we can deter them some way out, that's the way I would like to go. So I'll put that in my motion, and thank you for correcting me, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor Gregor. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, the unimproved.
I'll second that, the unimproved portion of Cottonwood Drive.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, please? Counselor Johnson?
Real quick, I think I need to clarify just a minute. I am in favor of closing the road. My concern would be more, if this doesn't solve the problem, and we have people driving around it, now I'm not sure we don't need feedback from the golf board, what they would like us to do. This could be a never-ending problem. I hope this solves it, and I'm in support of this, but I, there could, it could cause more problems down the road, and I hope the golf board has some, would like to weigh in on that.
Counselor Coleman?
Yes, Heather, if you could, could you address and let me know how this project would affect the budget, and where would the funds come from?
We are actually, with it being December already, really coming down to the wire of making sure we've got the funds where we need them, if we need to do any movement between line items, and at your next meeting, we'll actually have our final budget amendments coming before council. So from a city perspective, even though it's, you know, less than 500, we'd probably still look at doing that in the new year, but that would be three weeks from now, type of situation.
Okay, 'cause I'm just concerned to make sure that if we move forward with the closure of this road, that we address all of the priority projects that we have on our list, and then make sure that this one falls in the proper priority status. That would be my concern, to make sure that we address other priority ones.
And as a staff, you know, we greatly appreciate the consideration to unbudgeted items, and I think as long as council's aware that it was unbudgeted, and we can't do a whole bunch of these, but to still have some flexibility as well, just to keep an eye on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Diego?
Counselor Coleman, I appreciate your thoughts on, as far as the budget, but when, it's such a small amount, and when you're, we're talking about safety out there, safety for some of our constituents, I don't think you could put a price tag on that. And I, you know, sure, some of the projects are prioritized, and I appreciate that, but this, you know, she was talking about $500 from this.
I understand that, Counselor Gregel.
Thank you.
That wasn't my issue at all, and I understand safety is first priority for all people and all citizens, but I just want to make sure that we're aware that other projects that we're working on, that we make sure we address those projects in the order in which we have already allocated funds. So that was my concern. Right now, that's just one small issue, but if we get 10 other issues like this, it could become a larger issue, and that was my concern.
Thank you, council. We've got a motion and a second on the floor, and we can start voting on this issue, please. Kristi?
The motion carries on, honestly.
Thank you, council, and thank you, attendants for coming by, and hopefully this, in the future, will take care of some of the issues that we have out there. Appreciate you coming in. Next up, we have committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report? Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, the golf board met last week, I believe. The golf course is now closed, as of December 1st, for the winter. The restaurant does plan to remain open throughout the winter. I appreciate Ron Brink's comments on the food out there. I agree, it's excellent. The restaurant has booked numerous Christmas parties for the month of December, so that's going very well, helping the financial situation. The financial situation is getting much better. I think we'll speak more to that at the next meeting. That's all I'm gonna say on that now. The maintenance crew is down to two people for the winter maintenance, for the equipment, and that's all that's going on with the golf course. The pro shop is closed for the winter. I think if you need something for, as a Christmas item, you can get ahold of John Attencio, and he'll go out there and open it up for you, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Coleman?
Okay, thank you, mayor. I have a report from the San Luis Valley Development Resources Group and the San Luis Valley Council of Government. Their enterprise zone contributions, credits are up significantly over the last year at this time. November 2014 contributions were $69,300. Of that amount, $64,150 went into the pocket of Alamosa-based nonprofit and government entities. Further, there are $16,037 in Colorado tax credit that came back to benefit our local donors, that stays here in the valley for community economic development. There is $17,962 in federal deductions, which equate to over $34,000 that stays here in the San Luis Valley for the community economic development. In their revolving loan fund, they're working with two businesses that want retail stores here in Alamosa. This represents four new jobs, and an opportunity for potential growth. They're also working on a water study, and the reduction in the pumping water study is still moving forward. So that's what I have to report right now, today. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Those two, the COG and the DRG, are excellent committees, and we appreciate you being on those, and thank you for that report. Counselor Gillespie as well. Do we have any other committee reports? I know we have other committees, and I know you guys have been attending some of those meetings, so, anybody else?
I just want to mention La Puente is having their annual play at Adam State. I think the cost per person is $100 to benefit La Puente. It's really a great program. We had, they have ours divorced. Mr. Savaldi is also leaving, it's his last Christmas thing at that event, so if you can attend it, I'm just supporting La Puente. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Stefano. And with that, we'll move on to staff announcements. Heather?
I have two very quick announcements, and then Amanda has an announcement as well. Following the last council meeting, staff has communicated with Ms. Foote, and she has withdrawn her request for annexation. Additionally, I've received word from the fire chief that they will be looking at doing a controlled burn this Friday, along the fence from the cemetery south to the old hangars, so if you see that, don't be surprised, we are planning it. We have on your agenda, or your calendar, some items that are coming up. We have scheduled a very short work session before the December 17 city council meeting, in regards to a fairly straightforward policy draft, for your review and discussion. We have then the Christmas light parade that's coming up, and at the end of January, but I know they're working hard on it, is planning for the Alamosa Ice Fest, and Amanda, I think, had a few items.
Thank you, Heather.
Heather, was that policy work session, what policy are we working on?
I think we've had, within the last few months, a few instances where we've had need to have a council member, or the mayor, deliver a certificate of appreciation, and so it's just to develop a policy that gives a little bit more of a foundation for that.
Thank you, Amanda.
I just wanted to update council. We've had a lot of our customers requesting to be able to do their utility billing online, and we had originally thought we were gonna wait and do that, when we went live with the version 10, but not knowing what that timetable is, Jim and I have gone through and worked through, so we are working at pushing that through, and being available to our customers in January. So we will send out with the January 5 billing, and we've pretty much got all of it taken care of. We'll do some training with staff within the next week or so, to get training for that, and then we will send out with that January 5 bill, a small cheat sheet, per se, with that bill, so that they can see how to go in, how to log in, what they need to do to set that up, in order to make those online payments. The cost associated that for consumers, the only thing that they will have to pay extra, I believe it's $1.25 per transaction to use their credit card. The city will still continue to absorb what the credit card company is charging us for the revenues that we receive, we won't pass that on to the customer, but we will pass on the, and I believe it's $1.25 per transaction, but that will be something that they will have available to them. That software allows them to look at their billing, so they can see their history, they'll be able to go in and look at all of that, on a user-friendly basis.
Thank you, Amanda. Counselor Stefano?
Thank you, Amanda. A lot of my constituents will be really happy to hear that, because I had a lot of calls from a lot of people concerned they can't get out to pay their bills sometimes, and it's a great thing for them. Thank you.
We've definitely had a lot of interest in it, and so I'm glad that we're able to roll it out to our customers.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Coleman?
Sure, I have a comment. I would like to commend our city. This past weekend, we, there was a campaign called Shop Small, in the Alamosa and San Luis Valley, and I took the opportunity of shopping small, and visited with a lot of our local small vendors, and I would like to encourage our citizens to take advantage of our small businesses, and to support those businesses, because those businesses are the ones that employ our friends, neighbors, and families. So I encourage everyone this holiday season, to make sure that you support our local small businesses, so that we can keep our local economy strong and vibrant. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Coleman. Counselor Johnson?
That was good, Ty. Very nice. Mine's not gonna be so fun. I think council, just, I've been thinking about this for a bit. I think we need to deal with our three-minute time limit on conversations. Either we need to deal with it, or we need to not have it. So I don't know if we have a conversation about that, or how we're gonna do it, but it's, I think it's extremely rude, and it's annoying to have a buzzer going off. Either we're going to take care of it, or we're not, or we need to get rid of the buzzer, and I think we need to have a conversation and make a decision. Thank you.
Counselor Johnson, that is really my responsibility, and sometimes I hear the buzzer, sometimes I don't. If you don't mind, turn on the buzzer, so we can all hear it, especially anybody that's presenting, and that way, I, you know, I can go ahead and cut them off. I realize it's, it is somewhat irritating. I know we have a three-minute limit, and I apologize to council for not enforcing that more stringently, but I will in the future.
And if there's something we can do, I would be happy to, you know, whatever we need to do, and it's just something that, it's, sometimes it's tough to cut people off when they're talking, have something interesting going on, too, so I don't know, maybe we need to revisit the whole thing. I don't know.
Well, I think the three-minute, three-minute time limit is sufficient, and I just think it needs to be enforced, and I will do that. So I will apologize to council for that. Counselor Gillespie?
Yes, I'd just like to thank Parks and Rec and Public Works for their work on installing all the ornaments throughout the city. That's a huge job. I think you look around, you see how many ornaments we have on all the lights. Fortunately, the weather, this time of year is very nice, and they're able to put it on when the weather's mild. Unfortunately, when they take those ornaments down in January, it's probably a different story, but thank you for all their work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gillespie. Counselor Diego?
I was reading on the paper where Senator also is getting a drug dog, and I was wondering, you know, since almost every county or city is getting a dog for drugs, is, are we gonna be able to work together and finally try to put some stop to some of these drugs? Every time I talk to a constituent, that's the first thing that comes out of their mouth, is, we have a drug problem here, in the city of Alamosa, and the whole San Luis Valley, and hopefully that these animals, and maybe whoever trains them, we can put some kind of dent into that, because it's, according to people, that's getting really out of, out of control. And I don't know if you can address that, chief, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I know we find, have a dog, and I don't know what time period it is to get him going, and, and, I don't know if... And I remember earlier, you had told us that the funds for Drug Task Force were kind of taken away, and pretty much done with. Yeah, I believe we need to come together, you know, with these other communities, and fight this together, because there's no way we can fight it by ourselves, you know, and if we come together, even if council has to come up with some kind of funding to help, I'm for, I'm for putting, putting some stop to that, so, thank you, chief.
Thank you, Counselor Gregel. And I have an observation, and I always encourage our motorists to be very sensitive to pedestrians and the deer in our community. One of the observations I made sometime back was, a lot of our university students are crossing First Street over by Evan's School, and one time, we used to have a crossing sign there, and now it's gone. I can totally, I can totally sympathize with children that are crossing over on State Avenue, and what is that, 11th, and we have stop signs there for them. But when it comes to our university students, we are somewhat remiss in making sure that they can get across the street safely. I'm a walker, and I see many of the university students waiting to cross the street, especially at 8:00 in the morning, and they're just not being allowed to do that. So I think either we're gonna have to have a traffic study, I would encourage council to look into that, or maybe staff look into that, and see if anything can be done. When Evan's School was there, they used to have a crossing guard. I don't advocate a crossing guard, but I do advocate people having respect for university students trying to get across the street, to get to their classes. And that is one observation I usually make, 'cause I'm always down on First Street, and I'm usually always stopping to make sure that they can get across. The other thing is, Christmas is coming, and I hope that everybody gets in the Christmas spirit, and let's all, let's all enjoy what's left of the year, 'cause it's gonna fly by. Thank you. Thank you, council. Counselor Stefano?
I just want to thank the chief, man. You've got a hard job ahead of you in the valley. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, council, and so with that, I will adjourn this meeting.